Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Thank you. We're fixing to get live. Call this meeting of the Lancaster County Planning Commission to order. And I'd ask the clerk if she would to call LaRoe when she gets back. You're good. I knew where you were going. Now we're all fixed up.
Okay.
We'll call them.
All right. Alan Patterson.
Here.
Ben Levine.
Yoki Kuriton.
Here.
Judyanna Tinklinburg.
Here.
Sheila Henson.
Here.
James Barnett.
Here.
Chairman Deese.
Here.
Ask the clerk if she would make a record for that a quorum of the Planning Commission is present. Public notice of the meeting has been posted. The required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website. And the news media was informed of the time and place of the meeting. Welcome all of you here. It's good to see a group larger than one. Thank you for being here. And I'll ask you if you will take a moment, if you've got a cell phone or a pager or any noise-making devices, please mute them or turn them off so they don't make any noise in the meeting. And if you will, sir, I'll ask you to remove your hat. We don't wear hats in the chamber. This time, Commissioners, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Chairman, I move for approval.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second. Did the agenda for tonight's meeting be approved? All in favor? unanimous? Thank you. It's now time for citizens' comments. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and you will have up two, three minutes to make your comments to the Planning Commission, to the Planning Commission as a body, not as any individual, and not to the audience. Christopher Wood.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I live on Holloway Lane. I'm talking about the subdivision.
Please state your name and address.
Christopher Wood, 5009 Holloway Lane.
Thank you.
Lancaster, South Carolina. And I'm talking about the subdivision that they're gonna build right there off of Sienna Lane and Camille Road, right there. My property hooks up to their property. And I've been there since 2007. And I have a concern about, when I bought my house, I bought my house from Chris and Samantha Hall and Ronnie Hall, they built that whole line of houses down Camille Road there. And so, we was out walking the property, and they had told me, I don't know about true it is, but they told me that I live on lot 24, and they said lot 22, that they had lost that lot. And the reason why they lost that lot is because in front of my house, I got houses in front of me, and then I got Camille Road there, and my house is lower than those houses, and all the water comes from those houses down Camille Road, right down through my yard. And you can see there's a rut in my backyard, and it runs down through lot 22 there. And then it runs into the pond. There's a pond back there. And my concern is, right there, is if they build a house there, are they gonna do something about the water? Is the water still gonna be able to run into the pond? I don't want it building up in my backyard. It all runs down through the pond and been doing that for years, I guess. I don't know. But that's one of my concerns. My main concern is that. Also, the more houses that we build in there, the more people is gonna be coming down to that pond of fishing. And I've already done gotten broke into because people coming down there at that pond fishing, and so did my neighbor get broke into. That's about five years ago. So my concern is, there too is crime. And so that's my concern, is just a water problem and the crime. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Goran. I think I said that right. I'm not sure.
That's close enough. Kevin Garon, 10483 Stream Lane.
It is an A.
Yeah. Thank y'all for having me. I'm also gonna speak later on item 5C. The last time, and the only time I've come to the planning board meeting, was a few years ago, when someone wanted to rezone some property adjacent to mine, and they were gonna jam in so many homes right up to my property that it just was not a good thing. I came over here, the board voted unanimously to rezone. I brought the issue to the county. I see one of the county commissioners here, and the county voted unanimously not to rezone. We have lost our soul in this county. We've lost our soul. The northern part of the county is exploding. We are becoming Atlanta. We're becoming Charlotte. This has got to stop. You are impacting, your decisions are impacting the lives of the people that have been there for a long time. I live on three and a half acres in a 50-year-old house on a gravel road. I am getting crushed by all this new development. And the roads can't handle it, the infrastructure can't handle it. I'll get into that in a little bit more detail on the more specific item. But what are we doing? What do we want this county to be? This is a rural county. Sir, or county, you are able to ask someone to take their house, their hat off. This does not fly around the rest of the country when all these people start coming in. If we have got to know who we are in this county, what we are, and we've got to protect it, I'm not against growth, but it's gotta be smart growth, and don't give me a 20/40 plan or those kind of things. This is out of control. The infrastructure can't keep up with it. Please reconsider what we're doing here. We can't just rubber stamp every single growth projection, every developer that comes in. They're making tons of money. The quality of our lives up there is decreasing significantly. It's a real impact. Talk to the people that live in the northern part of the county that have to drive their kids down to Indianland High School now. What used to be a 20-minute trip is now a 40-minute trip, and every year add another five or 10 minutes to the trip. We've got to rethink what we're doing here. Not against growth. If you don't grow, you die. But we've got to have a plan, and it's got to slow down a little bit. Okay? You're impacting people's lives with your decisions. Please think this through. Might not be down here in Lancaster, in the southern part of the county, but at some point, the northern part of the county will have enough commissioners and enough people to where they are gonna control the purse strings. Y'all need to think about that. Thank you.
That's all that has signed to speak in citizens' comments, so we will move on from The next item is 4A, November 21, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Mr. Barnett will abstain. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from.
Second.
We both said it, so either one. No worries.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all approved. Mr. Barnett, it's sustained. The motion passes by a vote of five to one. Next item is a December 7, 2023 workshop minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Motion from Ms. Kuriton. Excuse me.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second by Ms. Henson. All in favor? Unanimous? Next item is our public items. First is CP 2023 1464 Graybridge McMillan. It's an application by Lancaster County on behalf of Brian Sillian, Graybridge McMillan LLC, and LH, LEH, excuse me, SC McMillan, to change the future land use map and the comprehensive plan designation of 7.286 acres at 1662 McMillan Park Drive, from an employment center to a neighborhood mixed use, which would allow rezoning from light industrial to institutional in order to convert an existing structure to a school facility, a private school facility, I might add.
You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. As the chairman mentioned, this is a proposal to amend the comprehensive plan to accommodate a private school to be located in an industrial park. The property is shown in light blue, outlined on the map on the screen. The colors on the screen are difficult to read on the screen, but you had this in your packet, that those are land use indicators. The area that is in a circle with hash marks, that is the economic center in the comprehensive plan that covers that intersection off of I-60, or 160, excuse me, Fort Mill Highway. The applicant for this is the county, but the original applicant, the rezoner, was Graybridge McMillan, 7.2 acres, and currently zoned light industrial, proposed to become institutional. For refresher, from the rezoning application, this is the aerial view of the property's former Kennametal site, and it is currently unoccupied. Site reminder is that this is part of a multi-county industrial park agreement from Lancaster County Ordinance 2013-1230, as a multi-county park with Chesterfield County. This is information that has come up since the rezoning hearing. When we were doing some research on how to present this, we found that this was included in a multi-county business park, which is an economic development project that is cooperation with two counties. It can be done in the state with any two counties. This one is with Lancaster and Chesterfield. In addition, the property is part of a fee in lieu of tax of property, or fee in lieu of taxes agreement, which would be in place if that property had been sold with notification to the DOR prior to that. But because that was not done, the FLO agreement has expired. And then there's a traffic impact analysis on this site that was, we asked for that in general for larger developments and for items that we believe will have an impact on traffic. The applicant provided a memo indicating that they did not believe that they would create the 50-person, or the 50-trip threshold indicated for the traffic impact analysis. The compatibility is one of the things we look at with the comprehensive plan. When you're talking about adjusting the comprehensive plan for a future use, is it a compatible use with the comp plan? In addition, is it compatible with other items in the area? One thing we touched on in the rezoning but did not expose upon pretty much is that the application for a school doesn't just impact the area where it is, but it impacts where other uses can go that are covered under the industrial zoning on properties adjacent to it. There are a lot of uses that are required to have a 500-foot separation between schools, churches, or residential uses. And in adding a school in this area, it would offset any potential development on the other side of McMillan Industrial Park Drive from being located in that area. That could definitely impact economic development intentions in this area. This park is what part of the economic development program for Lancaster County. We also have talked with the applicant. They are still working on amending their covenants, conditions, and restrictions that were tied to the property. As we mentioned in the rezoning, they have a covenant condition and restriction document for all properties in the McMillan Industrial Park. The applicant is working on getting those removed and/or adjusted to allow this use to go on the property, but we haven't seen that yet. We do know that they're working on it, and they've reported to us they're working on it, but we don't have that yet. So until we have that, staff can't recommend that we go forward with that. And then it's out of conflict, or it's in conflict with the comprehensive plan currently. With this amendment, if the recommendation goes forward and the council does choose to amend the comprehensive plan for this piece of property, the incompatibility with the comprehensive plan would then go away because the application would become compliant with the change. As I said in the staff report, we don't take this, we don't say this lightly. I understand and have heard that there are a lot of folks in the Indianland area that would like to have more school choices and would like to have a school relocated into the Indianland area. Definitely understand that concern. I understand that the applicant indicated they had looked for a property that was zoned for schools, which is, or zoned for school is INS or institutional. What I didn't make clear enough for the first time was that institutional zoning is something that comes after the use, more so than before the use, with the exceptions being if you have a school, if the school buys a property, we would want to put INS zoning on it immediately to make sure that nothing else can happen to that and protect that investment for the school. But INS comes after a school, which is what the applicant is doing, which is the appropriate route for doing so with a school. It's just the location is, staff did not feel the location was appropriate for that, and we recommend denial because of the incompatibility with the property around it. Even after we've had the discussions with the applicant and with the, and after the neighborhood school property, or the school folks came out, we still have concerns. And we understand that there's a need for schools. It's not about the school itself, it's about the location. Have no problem with the school and any other general location that doesn't include industrial uses.
One question. Know that this is in a multi-state park with Chesterfield, or a multi-county park with Chesterfield County. Have they agreed to remove this?
We haven't had communication with them on that yet. This is a recent piece of information, so I wanted to.
Most all of our parks are in, in fact, all of them, as far as I know, are in multi-county agreements.
Okay.
So that's just information that might help.
Mr. Chair. I can't hear.
Is your microphone on? We can't hear you. Is it on?
Is it on?
It is. There's a red light. Okay.
But that would be one of my concerns, knowing that Chesterfield County is in agreement to remove this from the multi-county agreement, along with the agreement from the other property owners in McMillan Park. Any other questions for staff?
Everyone, Mr. Chair.
Patterson.
Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned in your report that the no TIA was needed, or the applicant didn't feel it was needed, so there's none there. How does that come about?
When we review a plan, we have an indicator in the UDO that says certain uses will require a traffic impact analysis. In that UDO section, and Matt, remind me if I'm wrong, it says that if you're gonna generate more than 50 trips, then you're required to have a TIA.
Right.
The question of generating the 50 trips is what the applicant is opining on that. Their opinion is that they won't generate more than 50 trips at the peak hour with their use. It then falls to us to consult with our engineering consultants to see if that kind of a school is one that would generally, or would not generally, meet a 50-trip limit. If they come back and say that they do, then we would go back to the applicant and ask them for a TIA.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Since the applicant is the county, I guess we will ask Allison if she has anything further to offer for the county. We do have one county official in here. I meant to mention Mr. Billy Moss Teller is a councilman from District 3. Maybe he could answer that question.
At the, when this item came up to council, there was discussion about whether this would be appropriate in that area or not. There was enough interest to see if this could be followed through, that both the staff and the applicant were given things to do. The staff being, they asked us as staff to draw up an amendment to the comprehensive plan and put it through the process, so that if the applicant could come up with the change in the CCR, that they would have a companion piece to go along with that. So in fulfilling that part of the role, the staff brought this to you. And we are, we will be ready to move forward if the applicant can amend the CCRs and go forward. At that point, then the council will have the decision to make. Long way of saying I'm doing what I was told, sir.
Very good. Okay. At this time, we will call this into public hearing on item CP 2023 1464. No one has signed to speak to this, so I will call this meeting out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you 2023 1464 Graybridge McMillan. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, in the interest of having a motion and affirmative on the floor, I'd make a motion to approve.
Have a motion from Mr. Patterson to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Ms. Kuriton. Discussion. Yes, Ms. Tinklinburg.
I think I probably have the same comments that I had the first time this came before us. I live in District 4. I'm familiar with this area. It just, I can't in good conscience agree that it's a great location for a school. It's in the middle of an industrial park and arguably one of the only areas in Indianland where we have lots zoned for light industrial, industrial for future growth. And by this being approved and changing the use of that lot, adjacent properties would be impacted and be limited with their use options. I cannot support it. I know that we have a need for private schools in the area. I just don't think that this is a great location at all, and I think that it would be irresponsible planning to move forward with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Kuriton.
I do think it raises a great question when the county has presented this to us this way. I think that being smart about it, that it does raise the issue that we need to look at schools and figure out ways to place schools, but it's messy, or I don't even know the right word, to leverage that kind of weight, in my opinion, to rezone this industrial park for that purpose.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Patterson.
I mean, I'm in line with the other two commissioners who have spoken. I think it's the fact that the CCR has not, they're working on the CCR amendment, but the fact that that hasn't been done. A little concerned that the applicant wasn't willing to do a TIA, you know, to help us make a decision on that. And then also, you know, to rezone something for a specific use that impacts not just that use, but also adjacent properties and potentially an economic center that we really don't have a lot of up in the Panhandle. I mean, we have two main thoroughfares in the Panhandle, and that's Highway 160 and that's Highway 521. And to take a parcel away from one of those economic centers and employment centers that's on one of those major thoroughfares is just really concerning to me when I think with some more work on the applicant's, or the original applicant's part, they could find a more suitable location that would be closer to residential and more appropriate for a private school. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Anyone else?
I just, I wanna make one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, real quick. We're trying to set the precedent that we are looking at the comp plan with our rezoning decisions and our planning decisions and having smart growth go forward. So if it seems so simple and easy to change the comp plan to accommodate cookie-cutter scenarios, I just, it strikes a nerve with me, and it doesn't feel smart. So just also on setting the precedent that we're following the comp plan to lead our planning efforts, that is another reason why I do not, I don't support this. So thank you.
That's good.
Ms. Tinklinburg. Anyone else? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve CP 2023 1464. I have a motion to approve CP 2023 1464, Graybridge McMillan LLC. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alan Patterson?
Against.
Yakeem Akurten?
Against.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Against.
Sheila Henson?
Against.
James Barnett?
Against.
Chairman Deese?
Against.
Motion to approve failed by a vote of six to zero. And this will go to county council for their consideration at a, some future date. They, they post their own agenda, I don't, so. They will be notified of the time and place of that meeting, so. The next item is subdivision 2023 0325, Jasmine Hills. It's an application by Ras Investments LLC for preliminary plat for 34.14 acres, Stradlin Pettish Road at the intersection of Barbeville Road.
Excuse me, Chairman Deese? Just as a point of order, the actual case number is SD 2022 2205.
I believe that he read item C rather than item B.
It's 2022?
Yeah. The, we're on 5B, which is the Sands at Kershaw.
You're right. I'm sorry, I skipped that one.
That's all right. It's 2022.
Go ahead with that if you like, but we need to...
No, we would have to amend the agenda if we're going to do that, so let's, let's go to B.
I'm sorry, I just totally missed one. All right, we'll go back to it. Subdivision 2022 2205, the Sands at Kershaw, AKA Little Dude Road.
Yes, sir. This is an application for a preliminary plat for 38 acres located at the southwest corner of Fork Hill and Little Dude and Kershaw for a single-family subdivision of 74 lots. The property is shown on the screen outlined in red. It is zoned MDR, which is medium-density residential that equates to about two and a half units per acre. The applicant, Earl Colson and Colson Enterprises, Inc., is interested in creating a subdivision on the property. The property location photos are, this is looking along Fork Hill Road. The first one looking north on Fork Hill, and the second one looking south from the same vantage point. Looking along Little Dude Road, you have looking east along Little Dude on the first image, and west along Little Dude at the second one. We were working late that night, so sorry about the, the darker photos. An aerial view of the photo, of the property, the property is outlined now in the light teal, and it shows proximity to both Little Dude Avenue, which is on the, the top, near the top of the map. It goes in a curving yellow line, which is Little Dude. And then the property also fronts on Fork Hill, which is perpendicular to the, the screen and informs part of the boundary of the property. The site plan that was proposed by the applicant is shown on the screen. As you can tell, we have two entrances. One is off of Little Dude and one is off of Fork Hill. This conforms to the regulations for Lancaster County, which says that a subdivision of 58 lots or more needs two points of ingress egress for public safety purposes. The challenge that we have with this one is that the points of ingress and egress, while they meet up with the county's needs for safety, the points themselves are having some difficulty meeting the DOT separations. And we'll talk about that a little bit more after this. The traffic impact analysis was approved for this location, that no off-site improvements were required unless the scope of the subdivision has significant changes, which it does not. But the existing site plan has an emergency entrance off of Fork Hill Road, meaning that it could be entrance and exit just by emergency services in order to help address some of the DOT concerns about having so many intersections in a short distance on Fork Hill. The DOT advised, though, that they were not in favor of that, and that if there were two accesses to be achieved, then they both needed to be on Little Dude Avenue. So this is part, and to help you understand why we're having an issue with this subdivision, there's challenges in that the subdivision only has so much frontage along both roads. And in those areas where there's frontage on those roads, there are also existing intersections of other streets that are providing some offset issues. So the DOT, the top arrow says that the DOT has asked for both entrances to be located on Little Dude Road. This proposal does not meet the county separation requirements between new streets, nor does it technically meet the DOT separation requirements, although they, DOT will give a variance at times when they prefer one, one alternative over the other. The access denied by DOT on the, the second arrow points to the entrance off Fork Hill, but that's saying it does not meet separation requirements between Old Lancaster and Pine Ridge Roads. To further in, give you a picture of this, the property along Little Dude has just over 1,000 feet of frontage from property line to property line. If you're supposed to have 500 feet of separation between intersections from the DOT basic standards, and then the county also has that you need to have separation between the frontage of streets at least 300 feet, you're going to have a very difficult time meeting both of those rules from that frontage, which is why the applicant did what the county originally asked for, which is a second entrance and then off of Fork Hill. But the Fork Hill Road is also a challenge in that there's only 700, right, 750 feet from the main intersection to the end of the property line, and there's only 275 feet between Old Lancaster and the proposed entrance. So we have a lot of challenge with the road access points here. We don't know quite what the right answer is. The applicant needs some time to work on that, because right now that they're, they're sitting at a, a no from DOT, the way that it's designed. But if it's redesigned with both entrances and exits off of Little Dude, not only do you also, you possibly have impacts in the wetland areas, you have separation issues already from the intersection, then the next road up, and then a third road. So it, it is a challenge. There may be a solution, but it hasn't been found yet. But we're willing to work with and help wherever we can. We also have comments from Water and Sewer, they have not, they have provided a willingness and capability letter. They're determining whether Town of Kershaw or Lancaster Water and Sewer would be the one to deliver it. And then we had an issue with a portion of wetlands that were shown on, on the map as being implanted lots. The applicant is here and has provided, can provide you some information on how they're addressing that. But we're not currently able to recommend approval with the outstanding comments from DOT. We welcome the opportunity to help again in the future, but we can't recommend approval today as is. And is Mr. Colson here? Mr. Colson's here and available to talk to you.
Any comments to staff? Yes, Ms. Inklundberg.
I might have just missed it and you answered this, but what is the minimum distance between the intersection and the access? What is required per code?
DOT requires 500 feet. Our code printed on there, I think it's 300 feet.
Okay.
And it's, this is the additional impact of being on a corner lot, which is the section of code that I copied on the screen there.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Anything else for staff? I was concerned about the, I think County Water and Sewer has some major problems with it at this point, and I noticed when I was out there that they're already installing water and sewer on the property. And from what I understand, Lancaster County Water and Sewer has not approved that, but it's been installed along Little, Little Dude Road. So, the TRC items need to be resolved, I would think, before they come forward anymore. Anyone else? The applicant want to speak? Come forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
Andy Colston. I'm at 5139 Pageland Highway, Lancaster, South Carolina. The issues are on the water out there coming down Little Dude Road, that is actually the Lancaster Water and Sewer doing that work, that's not us. They're running in Humane down to the commercial buildings.
Wasn't anybody out there working when I was out there. I didn't know who it was.
Right. Yes, sir. That's, that's the, that's the Water and Sewer Department doing that work. We're not doing anything out there. The DOT addresses and stuff, the second entrance there on Fork Hill Road, that is a gated entrance, which meets the fire code and stuff, and the DOT is okay with that. So we do have a second entrance into the subdivision there.
Good. We, we just need that as part of the review comments.
It was in the review comments. They were in that, in that last set of comments that y'all sent to us.
Thank you.
Everything. And then on the wetland impact there in the middle, which I brought to Matthew earlier today, I didn't get it until earlier, we did lose three lots in there to give the buffer and stuff around the wetland issues there coming into the entrance there. So we went from 74 lots to 71. And I think that's the only, only issues that we had on there to, to be addressed.
Right.
Thanks, sir.
Sir, thank you.
Mr. Colston, may I ask real quick? The amended plat with the three last lots, has that been submitted to the, through Evolve?
I've got a copy of it on my way here this evening, and I had a copy printed out. I gave to Matthew and him over here this evening. When I got here, then I will email it to y'all.
Okay.
And everything, so y'all will have that.
The sooner we get it, the sooner we get staff to look at it.
Correct.
At this time, I will consider this in public hearing. No one is signed to speak to this, so we will be out of public hearing at this point. Commissioners, you have before you, and I'll get it right this time. Let me get it to think of it. SC 2022 2205, the Sands at Kershaw, AKA Little Dude Road. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion for Ms. Henson to approve.
Second.
Second.
In the interest of having something on the table, I'll second it.
I have a second from Mr. Patterson. Comments? Discussion? Tinklinburg?
Thank you. I, I guess I'm not sure who my question is for, the applicant or, or you, but what, has an additional yield plan been entertained possibly, I mean, to accommodate an entrance that doesn't have to be logged? I'm, I'm thinking of response times and emergencies and having that access opened. I understand that you might lose lots 14, I think it's 14 through 16, or curving that down further, but it is an option, or am I, is that not an option to look at? Just looking and redesigning, coming up with a concept that maybe can accommodate that access separation from the intersection?
There's, there's no room for separation on Fork Hill.
Right. But if we move that interior road further down and have a...
You still don't have the 275 feet, you need 300. We're still 25 foot short. And the DOT is requiring 500 feet, which we do not have. You only have 275. So the only way it will work with the fire marshal and the DOT is to put a gated up there, which will be on a Yelp system to work with their alarms and stuff on the fire truck. So they don't have to get out to unlock it. It will open up automatically.
Okay.
Do you see the 275 on the map?
Yep.
If you extend that all the way down to the bottom of their property line, you still don't meet the 500, 100 feet.
I see. Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's what he's saying about the DOT. DOT has to have 500 feet, and the Old Lancaster there is, is a pre-existing road.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Excuse me, Mr. Barnett?
For clarity, we're talking back and forth about entrances and all. With doing the gated thing, does that fulfill a requirement where we don't have an issue?
That is one of the alternatives, yes. When I wrote the staff report, it wasn't on the list as being resolved, but Mr. Colson indicates that he's turned in the information that's been resolved.
That does resolve it, so now they are within limits.
And with removing the three lots that were in the wetlands.
Another question, can we approve something without having the drawing of the three lots removed, or we just assume that that's there?
It's just an assumption, even though he have the agreement that it'll be mailed in immediately after he receives it.
We prefer to have it.
We prefer to have it in hand.
In the system.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In answer to Mr. Barnett's question, it is possible for, for one of the commissioners to make an amendment to the motion, to make it a, approve with conditions.
Yes, you can.
This is true, and the last time we had conditions on this property, they never did get met, so...
Well, at that point, it would, they'd have 60 days to make it happen, or it would drop, the approval would drop, and then they could come back again.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Patterson?
Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir.
And the applicant said that the SC DOT concern was resolved. Is that documented in any way?
It was not at the time that I wrote this. It has absolutely possible that it's there now, but...
Has staff put eyes on the documentation?
Not, I have not yet. I can look it up while we talk.
I'm just, I'm just...
But, yeah. What I do know is that this is a discussion that had been going on at TRC at the Technical Review Committee. So I know that the alternative about the, the emergency access with the WLP entrance point was discussed by the fire marshal and the applicant's representatives, and we know that that's an option.
And is, is there any timeline on resolving the water and sewer concerns as far as who's going to provide those utilities? If I read that correctly in TRC?
Yes, that's a discussion between El, Lancaster County Water and Sewer and the town, Town of Kershaw.
Right.
If you make a conditional, a vote to conditionally approve this, actually, you've got a motion on the floor right now to approve it. If that motion is amended to approve it conditioned upon receiving, or the staff having in hand the paper that says water and sewer is okay, paper says DOT is okay with the emergency access on Fork Hill, and the new plat removing the properties that were indicated in the wetlands, then I think those are the three major things that staff had on the list. If you would add into that, that anything else on the, on the Technical Review Committee sheets before we let them go forward, then that would give us 60 days to make sure it's all done, and if it's not, then we'll come back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment.
Mr. Barnett?
So that we get it clear, would you mind repeating that? That's what I want to recommend the amendment be.
Proof of water and sewer connection. Proof of DOT approval of the entrance on Fork Hill. Proof of the properties that were shown in the wetlands being removed from the plat. And completion of any outstanding TRC comments.
Four items?
Four.
All right. TRC completion. SC DOT.
Water and sewer.
Satisfaction with the...
Water and sewer.
With the entrances?
Yep.
The plat plan being corrected.
Mm-hmm.
And the fourth one?
Water and sewer, wetlands.
Lancaster County Water and Sewer in Kershaw making the decision on who's actually supplying...
Lancaster County's already started it, so obviously, they've already started this.
The, the water district, the water and sewer district has started with the water.
However, that, that extension is for the commercial properties.
Right.
They're, they're bringing additional, they're bringing additional capacity...
They are bringing additional, they are bringing additional capacity to the commercial property across the street, but it is adjacent to that, so.
And we have to really go by what's in TRC comments, not by what applicant hearsay, correct?
Exactly, but if we go by the conditions, that this is met, is what they're saying. And I will, the motion that I made, I will amend that to include that.
We got an amendment already.
Right.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second for the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. So if you, if we, when you take off those three properties and you move the road out, we won't gain another, we can't gain another 25 yards for the 300?
You can't gain another 25 yards for what?
For the county, to meet county requirements of the 300.
Oh. You can gain a little bit of space, but the challenge on that one is that there is already a road across the street where they have planned that intersection of that roadway. It says Fort Hill Lane, which I don't know that we'll have that approved before final, but do you see the arrow that says 658-foot separation? On the right-hand side of that arrow is a street across the street. It's an intersecting T already there, and they have aligned that road to meet at that curb cut with that property, that street across the way. May I go back to the aerial?
Are you talking north of the property?
Yes.
Yes.
We're just talking about the road that runs north-south, not east-west.
I have a motion on the floor. Let's get it seconded and then go into this full-length discussion. I need a second to the motion to amend made by Mr. Barnett.
I'll second the motion to amend.
I have a second for Ms. Kuratin, thank you. Motion is to amend, to approve with the conditions that we've discussed and listed, which are Lancaster County Water and Sewer and Kershaw, making the decision who's going to actually furnish the water and sewer for that property, and that the TRC be completed. South Carolina DOT, the entrance is confirmed and resolved in writing, and the plat plan corrected and in the hands of staff and the Planning Commission. Now we can have a discussion to continue.
I want to point at the lots that are removed because of the wetlands.
Want to go here first? Or here, this area?
What lot number? Okay.
And it's in this area?
What numbered lots are in?
I think it was in the staff report. Because it's renumbered on this proposal. So it was 44, 45, and 46.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lot 44, 45, and 46.
And this is all concerning the plat plan completion, the new plat that we're discussing.
On the survey, those areas have violated impacts. And we made that statement, and we have to quizzing to remove those. Unfortunately, I don't know that there is, if that provides flexibility.
Quite as much because the intersection here is already at a place where there's a road across Little Dude.
So we're talking about moving the intersection down that's on Fort Hill Road? The one that's possibly being lit? Right?
There is.
Further south, and then adding lots on the interior road running north-south? So. And eliminating those three on the bottom. So if you eliminate 14 through 16, and then extend the north-south road down and curve it, and you should be able, maybe only lose one lot, but then you wouldn't have to have a locked entrance, because that would meet the 300 feet.
The applicant already answered this question. There is not enough frontage on Fort Hill Road to provide the separation.
I'm looking at creatively solving the problem with an alternative lot plan layout.
We have a motion before the floor. That's exactly what I'm getting to. We're not going to redraw the plan for them. We've got a motion on the floor.
You have to make another motion to offset it.
The motion and the second was including the plat plan correction made by the applicant and in the hands of the planning staff and the Planning Commission. That was the motion. And we.
I'd like to make, to make a motion to go slower then, so that we can process this, so that we can.
We have a motion on the floor.
Answer the questions in timely manner.
Would you restate your motion?
I would just like to slow down so that all of the questions can get asked and answered by the commissioners, so that we are locked and loaded when we're making our firm decisions.
The discussion is open, but it's open on the items that go with the motion that was made and seconded. And those items were resolving the Lancaster County Water and Sewer and Kershaw, which one is actually providing water and sewer for the property, the TRC items being completed, South Carolina DOT entrances approved by South Carolina DOT, and the plat plan corrected and revised and in the hands of the planning staff and a copy to the commissioners. That is the motion that's on the floor that we're discussing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote on the amended item.
We will vote first on the amendment to include those, those conditions. And after that, if that's approved, then we will vote on whether to approve as amended. So the first, we are voting on the addition of the conditions. Alan Patterson?
Or.
Yoki Ma Kuratin?
Or.
Judyanna Tinklinburg?
Or.
Sheila Henson?
Or.
James Barnett?
Or.
Chairman Dees?
Or.
The motion to amend conditional has passed by a vote of five to zero. We will now vote on the.
I'm sorry, correction, six to zero.
Six to zero, I'm sorry. I left my own number off. It gets confusing sometimes, really. We will now vote on the original motion as amended. The motion was made by Ms. Henson, seconded by Mr. Patterson.
Have we had discussion on that?
You did.
Okay, I'm.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Alan Patterson?
Against.
Yoki Ma Kuratin?
Against.
Judyanna Tinklinburg?
Against.
Sheila Henson?
Or.
James Barnett?
Or.
Chairman Dees?
Or.
The motion failed by a vote of three to three. And this, we will wait on the conditions to come back in completed, I guess, but the motion to approve has failed.
Did you want to entertain a different motion? Did any of the commissioners?
If there is a different motion on the floor, I'll hear it. Hearing none, we'll move on. The next item, let me get it right this time, is SD 2023-0325, Jasmine Hills. And this is Matthew. Thank you.
All right, can I start off with a little bit of overview for this project? So the parcel is currently split by Pettis Road located off of Barbourville Road, 34.14 acre parcel. Intent is to construct a 75 lot, single-family subdivision, and the zoning is currently medium density residential. On the left-hand side of the screen is a zoning and location map of the area with the subject parcel outlined in red. There are two location photos of the site. The one on the left is an aerial view, which has the zoning, as well as the subject parcel outlined in yellow. And on the right is a view of the Pettis and Barbourville Road intersection. So for the proposed plan itself, 75 lot, single-family residential, proposing 8.36 acres of open space. The internal road network will be privately maintained with a connectivity index of 1.33. And on the right-hand side of the screen is the proposed plan. So in terms of the traffic impact analysis, a TIA has been submitted, but it has not been reviewed by the county's on-call traffic consultant due to the review not being paid for by the applicant. The submitted TIA does not have, call for any off-site improvements to occur for this development, and the development is expected to generate 57 a.m. peak hour trips and 76 p.m. peak hour trips, with a total of 774 weekday, well, weekday daily trips. So staff's concerns mostly revolve around the outstanding TRC comments. The project has been through two sketch plans with TRC, and the current preliminary plat has outstanding comments from E911 addressing, the Lancaster County Water and Sewer District, the Planning Department, and SDOT. Starting off with the district, the current downstream infrastructure from the project is not in place, and pursuant to a policy put in place in March 9, 2021 by the district, the district will not formally review plans or issue willingness and capability letters until the downstream infrastructure has been put in place and is operational. In terms of SDOT, widen Pettis Road to include 10-foot lanes and 2-foot paved shoulders, as well as having, when this improvement occurs, coordination from adjacent developers. So all this construction only has to occur once on Pettis and Barbourville Road. For the Planning Department, the outstanding comments is a missing internal landscaping plan. Staff recommends denial of this preliminary plat due to outstanding TRC comments, needing confirmation for the potential for water and sewer access for the site, and confirmation that when the improvements occur for Pettis and Barbourville Roads occurs at once, and all these adjacent developers can work together, so. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman? Matthew, on the TIA comments, it says the no external improvements to occur due to this proposed development. Have we looked at the cumulative trips that are for the other developments on Pettis? And how that could impact, you know, as a whole, not just this development and another development, but what's the overall usage? And how is that going to impact the Pettis and Barbourville intersection? I mean, I'm very familiar with the intersection. It's on a curve. It's a dangerous place with the traffic on Barbourville already. And it troubles me that we have before us, and we're going to, we're going to add, what, 75 more residents there that's going to enter out. I'll ask that question first, if we look at it as a whole.
So this would just be looking at this development, not the proposed other developments farther up the road?
Okay. Secondly, Mr. Chairperson, and I know this is outside of us technically, but I think from a planning perspective, we have to consider it. Aren't there two additional schools slated for that, that area? An elementary school and a high school?
I think they have bought property for an elementary school. I'm not sure about the other.
Mr. Dees, I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
I said I had, they had bought property, I think, for an elementary school in that area, but I don't know about the other. I haven't, haven't heard.
So just as, I guess, a point of information, there's going to be some significant traffic increases on Barbourville Road that I think, I'm not a traffic engineer as a disclaimer, but I think that it will impact this intersection pretty significantly.
Anyone else? Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add? State your name and address for the record.
Gerald Lee with Chow &amp; Associates, Seven Clusters Court in Columbia, South Carolina. We are the civil engineer assisting this developer with the design of this project. Duly noted, the TIA, you know, that the payment has been made, you know, and so that should not be an issue anymore. Our traffic engineer has determined that this subdivision by itself will not require additional lane, turning lanes. It is required that the DOT has asked us to widen Pettis Road, which is substandard now, to make it an acceptable SDOT road, and that is part of this design. The comment about the water and sewer, we have been in conversation with Lexington County Water and Sewer, and it is our understanding that our client will be required to make a $200,000 capital investment to the downstream improvements to get the water and sewer acceptable. Now, the fact that it is not to our site yet, and we cannot submit our water and sewer plans yet, is a problem for this project, so. If that's what it's going to take, we would ask to be deferred to the next meeting then, so we can handle, you know, get a handle on these comments.
Great. Thank you, sir. We'll now consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. When I call your name, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You will have up to three minutes to make your comments to the Planning Commission as a whole, and not to anyone individual. Lynn Martin?
Lynn Martin. Excuse my hokey voice. I'm Lynn Martin, and my address is 10812 Pettis Road, Indian Land. By the way, I saw an error on the TRC comments, something about widening Pettis Farm Road. Pettis Road and Pettis Farm Road are two distinct roads. There's also an old Pettis. It's crazy. I can't even order pizza. Nobody can find me. But Pettis Road is the one we're talking about, not Pettis Farm Road. And I am probably the closest single-family residence impacted by this proposed subdivision. And I share a border, a property border, with the bigger piece of the property that is along Pettis Road. And currently, I am the first house when you turn off of Barbourville on Pettis, and I won't be after this is in. I have a few concerns, only one proposed solution, which isn't so much a solution, but I think substantial mitigation, if I could ask for a condition. And that is a wall, a solid block wall, decorative wall, but some kind of a substantial wall, not a fence, that is like six feet high, bordering my property and the subject property for keeping children, deterring children, from going over to my property. It's horse property. It's one of the things that gives my house value, is I'm one of the last remaining horse properties within a mile and a half of Ballantyne. And it's set up for horses. I have horse pasture. I have a small barn. And I love children as much as the next guy. And I was very attracted to horses when I was a little girl, so I know children are going to come over there. If the property borders, you know, if there's horses right up against the row of their houses, those children are going to be over there all the time. You can't watch them all the time. Anything can happen. Children can easily get hurt by the horses. No intent of the horse, no intent of the child, but you can't watch them all the time. And if they have to launch a wall, and they don't see the horses, without launching that wall, I think it will deter them coming over, trying to put their little hands through the fence, and, you know, maybe get bit. A horse can mistake their fingers for food. And I just would ask for there to be a solid barrier between my property border and the. and the subject property. So if you would impose that condition, I would ask for that.
Thank you, ma'am. And our documents does, does show Pettis Road, not Pettis Farm.
Right, but the TRC note said Pettis Farm. Widening Pettis Farm, which is, like I said, I have this problem all the time.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it.
Kevin Garon. Tried to get it right that time.
Hello again. Kevin Garon, 10483 Stream Lane. If you see the map, there's a little blue dot just down from the yellow area, and you see Stream Lane. I found it very poignant listening to the lady right before me talking about one of the last, if not the last horse pasture in the area. This is what I was talking about earlier. What has happened to the soul of our county? We're a rural county. Why are we becoming Charlotte? It doesn't have to be this way. I'm very glad to hear Mr. Patterson talk about TIA. It's one of my biggest issues. I have to come out of, Stream Lane is a one-lane gravel road, county road, county-maintained. Try making a left out of Stream Lane on the Barberville. You're taking your life in your hands. When we do our TIA's, we're looking at one development. We're not looking at the aggregate of all the other communities along these roads. Barberville is a very dangerous road right now. It was repaved a few years ago, kind of in place. It's got big drop-offs. It's very narrow. Right at Pettis Road, there is a big curve right there. And when it's dark, that is a dangerous area. You go up Harrisburg Road, I don't know what in the world happened right up near Pineville on Harrisburg Road, the estates of Sugar Creek or whatever that is. It looks like an atomic bomb went off. There's not a tree anywhere. Why are we approving a development that does not leave any nature? I have a master's degree in hydrogeology. I'm an environmental geologist. I watch what happens with stormwater flow during, when the estates of Sugar Creek or these other developments up there, I'm not sure it was that one or some of the other ones right up along that road. When they were being built, when there was a rain event, it was just red clay running down the highway, running into Sugar Creek. Sugar Creek's filling up with sediment. We have, what, two or three people, stormwater folks in this county, that are trying to oversee these sediment and erosion control permits. It's not getting done. Go up there and look at it yourself. Harrisburg Road and Barberville Road are just annexed into Charlotte. I may as well pay Mecklenburg County taxes. I lived in Mecklenburg for 20 years. I moved out because I couldn't stand it. And I wanted some property and some peace. And I'm back in Mecklenburg County in a 50-year-old house on a gravel road, and I'm just watching the city collapse around me. We don't need this. And the way that this is being done fragmented, where the roads, Barberville Road and Harrisburg Road is terrible. It's not being repaved by the county. But when the developments come in, they put in a center lane, and they pave as little bit as they can. And the rest of the road is still a bunch of potholes. Drive down Harrisburg up to Pineville. Go out, try to go to Pineville from Barberville at 7:00 a.m. in the morning and see how, how long it takes you to get there. We, we've got to, if we're gonna grow like this, the roads, the roads have to get better. We need to run sewer down Barberville. Why are the people that live there not getting any benefit from what's happening to us? I'm still on, on septic.
Time.
Thank you, sir. That's all that is signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing at this time. Commissioners, you have before you. S.C. 2023-0325 Jasmine Hill. Do I hear your motion?
Mr. Chair, in the interest of getting something on the floor in an affirmative manner, I vote to approve, I mean, I make a move to approve.
I have a motion to approve for Mr. Patterson.
I'll second.
Have a second, Ms. Curriton. Discussion, please.
Mr. Chair. Like I stated earlier, and I appreciate Ms. Martin, your comments, and also Mr. Garon. Very familiar with this area, from 40 years ago, driving a school bus to, to even much more recently, living in the area my whole life. And, and while I've stated before, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do know a dangerous road when I travel on it. And this is not a safe intersection. Pettis Road is where it intersects. Barberville Road is not safe now. And the addition of this 75 single-family homes with the additional future development will even contribute further to the safety. And in good conscience, I, I can't approve it. I mean, I, I, we, we have to find a way to raise the bar for developers that want to do business in our county. We have to have higher expectations for them and doing more than the minimums that are set forth by our UDO. We're working on a new UDO and comp plan now. We have to have higher standards for the safety of our residents. We are in a prime location, and we have a responsibility for the safety of the folks that travel this road. And so for that reason, I can't support, support this.
Anyone else? Mr. Englebert?
This is in my district, and I 100% agree with everything that Mr. Patterson said. I have to have complete peace of mind before I vote. And I just don't have it with this project. I think there's too many outstanding and incomplete items and comments that raise great concern, mostly the, the traffic, not just four years. Unfortunately, we have to think of the entire area. And it, it just doesn't sit well. It doesn't seem smart. I also don't feel comfortable moving something forward without utilities being in place. So for those reasons, I'm sorry, I do not support this.
Anyone else? No one rise, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alan Patterson?
Against.
Yohkima Curriton?
Against.
Judy Anna Mecklenburg?
Against.
Sheila Henson?
Against.
James Barnett?
Against.
Chairman Dees?
Against. The motion to approve is denied by a vote of six to zero. Next item. Is S.D. 2023-0765 Cane Mill, Colston. Ms. Allison, or Matthew, I'm sorry?
This one's me as well. All right, so the parcel is located off of Cane Mill Road, so a little over 11-acre site. Applicant owner is Andy Colston. Attentive is about a 17-lot subdivision. The zoning is medium-density residential. So here's two location photos of the site, the first being an aerial with the subject parcel on in yellow. And on the, the right is the current status of Sienna Lane off of Cane Mill Road. So for the proposed project on the 11 acres, 17 lots, they're providing a little over two acres of open space. And the proposed internal street network would be privately maintained. Currently, Sienna Lane is 140 feet long and is gravel. And on the right-hand side of the screen is a variant of the proposed plan. Now looking at the staff concerns, these also revolve mostly around outstanding TRC comments. This project has gone through two sketch plans with the TRC committee. The current preliminary plat has outstanding comments from engineering, planning, and SCDOT. In terms of SCDOT's comments, this is regarding, kind of going through and adding the second access from Sienna Lane onto Cane Mill Road. And so this highlighting this a little bit farther, the separation between the existing Cattail Road and the proposed new portion of Sienna Lane is 186 feet. Those need to be a minimum of 225 feet, according to the SCDOT arms manual. Now, staff did receive an update on this concern, yes, between yesterday and today. Received this revised plan, which shows Cattail Road being connected to Sienna Lane, and then that access from Cattail to Cane Mill being removed. Now, Cattail Road, that is a county road, so there needs to be a follow-up conversation between SCDOT and the county's Public Works Department to make sure that this arrangement would be feasible both sides. So staff is recommending denial of this preliminary plat due to outstanding TRC comments. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is here.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Patterson?
I'm looking for the, the neighbor's name. Mr. Wood had concerns about runoff on his property from this development. Is there any way to assure that this development doesn't negatively impact his, that they're responsible for their runoff water and doesn't contribute to a bad situation for a neighbor that's already there?
So this site is, BMP stormwater measures are required for this. They are showing it on the proposed sketch plan. And this would be reviewed by SCDHAC for approval for the stormwater measures and kind of control.
The open space that they're proposing, is that, I noticed it's around the corner of the pond there. Is that wetland?
So it is not, it's not, we know it's not in a flood plain. We know that.
Is it? I drove out there and looked at it, and... It is concerning that the...
I'm sorry, sir, we can't hear you.
Maybe I'm talking to myself.
Turn it up.
No, it's fine. I just wasn't in it. I sit back. I have to sit back occasionally with this back of mine. I can't sit up long at the time, but I'm doing it. The, the runoff is what I was looking at when I was out there. I could tell that there's a good bit of water drainage across that property. Most of it, of course, is gonna head towards the pond. But there are other items of concern. And TRC being incomplete. And SCDOT and the county Public Works have yet to be in agreement on the access on the lower side of the property. So any other comments? Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. The, we now consider this in public hearing. No one is signed to speak to this. So we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Does the applicant have anything they would like to offer at this time?
Yes, sir. Andy Colston, 5139 Pageland Highway in Lancaster. The runoff of stuff of the neighboring properties, the neighboring properties are above us. So their water will continue to run across our property, which our BMPs and stuff will catch and stuff and carry down our streets. We should not be blocking any water to hold on to neighbors or creating any issues with them or, or adding any water to the existing homes. And the DOT there, as far as the thing of moving Cattail Road there, that is the latest drawing in which I got back yesterday from the DOT accepting that. And I sent that to Matthew yesterday when I got it back. And then he asked for some, the approval thing. So I sent him the copy of emails from the DOT showing that they would accept that. Of course, it has to meet their arms and stuff, which all that will go into when we do our civil drawings, showing the arm and site distance and everything on that in the civils. But they are on board with the way that drawing is there now.
All right, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing, have before you do I hear your motion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, we approve this preliminary plat conditionally. And that TRC comments are resolved. And even though Public Works is not into TRC comments about moving Cattail Road to be a part of this development, I'd also want one of the conditions to be Public Works' approval of that to take place. So they want to shut down Cattail Road and pull it into that lower entrance. And I would want one of the conditions to be Public Works' approval of that.
Anyone else?
Can I second that motion?
Thank you.
I'd like to add also that the neighboring property is, make sure that the runoff for the neighboring property isn't a problem to the conditions.
All right, so that would have to be a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that, oh, sorry.
Also, one of the conditions, no, I can't, because it's already been seconded. Never mind.
No, you're right. I have a motion to approve with the following conditions. That the TRC comments be resolved, and that Public Works approve the work to be done on Cattail Road. And of course, it's my understanding from staff that DHEC, of course, is gonna be looking at the water down there. And with the lay of this property, they're not gonna be running water across someone else because they're behind the other houses, and it's a downhill slide.
As long as that's noted.
Yeah, it will be noted.
That, that drainage plan has to be approved by, by SCDHAC. So that, that will be inspected and approved by DHEC to make sure that their drainage plan is sufficient.
I'll make a note that DHEC approved the water flow problem out there. Is that sufficient, Ms. Colton? I mean, no. Yeah, Ms. Colton?
And procedurally, can you get a second to that recommendation?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
As it stands right now, we have a motion and a second to approve conditionally that the TRC be resolved. Public Works approve the work at Cattail Road. And DHEC approve the water problem. Is that sufficient to everyone?
We have two motions before us.
Yes.
One was just a simple addition, even though we did have a second.
Yes, but it's a...
...of something that was already a requirement. Because it's already, DHEC is already gonna require the water problem to be handled.
Do you want to handle that, that second addition first, or do you want?
Handle it first.
Okay, so we will vote first on, on... Okay, so we will vote first on Ms. Kiratun's amendment to add a condition of SDHAC approval of the drainage plan.
I have a second on her amendment.
She did.
We did. We have Judy Anna as a second on that. Yes.
Thank you.
So, we will vote first on that amendment with adding that condition. Alan Patterson. Yuki McKiratun.
Or.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg.
For.
Sheila Hinson.
Or.
James Barnett.
Or.
Chairman Dees.
Or.
Amendment that South Carolina DHEC approved the water problem out there has passed by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Yep, now we can vote on the...
They can have discussion.
They can have additional discussion if they need.
Further discussion on the original motion? Hearing none.
We are now voting...
Original motion as amended.
Voting on the motion as amended with all conditions. Alan Patterson.
Or.
Yuki McKiratun.
Or.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg.
For.
Sheila Hinson.
Or.
James Barnett.
Or.
Chairman Dees.
Or.
Motion to approve with the conditions stated, TRC being resolved, Public Works approval on Cattail Road, and the amended South Carolina DHEC approval on the water problem, has passed by a vote of six to zero. Next item is SD 2023 1409, the pinnacle at Sunset Point at Edgewater.
Yes, sir. This is application by True Homes for preliminary plat for 9.14 acres at the intersection of Bethel Boat Landing Road and Spinnaker Way for 19 single-family lots. This is part of the Edgewater community. The reason it doesn't says it's part of the Edgewater development is because this is a larger, well, a small piece of a much larger area that has several different ordinances, but we're going to try and simplify it for the, for this hearing. The intersection of Catawba Ridge and Bethel Landing, Bethel Boat Landing Roads, there is a triangle of property that the applicant is now, is the owner, True Homes. It's 9.14 acres, and it is planned development district, and in that planned development district is considered low-density residential. So, to give you a little bit of history, the development that is Edgewater is part of a larger, a much larger planned development district in 1999, ordinance 356, came to edit the original ordinance of 322 and became Catawba Ridge. So, this original development was Catawba Ridge. In 2008, a section of it, ordinance covered under ordinance 961, became a separate regulation, 3,771 acres. That's the area covered in tan on the map is covered by ordinance 961. Ordinance 356 covers the areas in the maroon or pinkish and the purple. The maroonish is the True Homes development is known as Edgewater right now. If you're driving down through the area, you go to look at the Edgewater homes, that's where that's located. And then the southern part is the, oh, shoot, I just forgot the name, I can't read it. Waldorf Grove. Thank you. So, for the regulations of this subdivision, we did not look at the ordinance we typically look at for True Homes. We looked at the Walton ordinance. This is some imagery along Catawba Ridge Road adjacent to the property. This is aerial view showing you where the location is as you're going down Catawba Ridge Road, and this is the proposed plan. It's a very simple 19-lot plan. There wasn't much indication on that for TRC review. We did have a few sections where the sub, where the sidewalks weren't there, and that can be easily fixed. 911 said that the street names need to be changed before it's recorded. That can be handled before, as part of your conditional approval can come to you at another month, because we would not give it that preliminary review without it if you put that as a condition on it. The plan doesn't show hydrants on both sides of the street. The applicant has been in contact with the fire marshal and is getting that resolved, and Lancaster Water and Sewer has to have a review of it as well. The way that it sits right now, we can't recommend approval, but with those amendments handled, or those TRC comments handled, we'd be able to handle it there. If you wanted to move it forward to another meeting, you have that option, but the applicant has been working stringently with me to get those things settled, and I have confidence that they can do that.
Any questions for staff?
As a, as a point of order, we cannot move this to January 16th.
Right.
That agenda is full. So, the applicant can request deferral to February, or if we deny, they can come back at any time.
Or if you give conditional...
If you give conditional approval, they'll have 60 days, but we can't move anything to the January meeting.
Thank you for pointing that out.
We are under the, under the clock for preliminary plats, so this either has to be denied or conditionally approved. If it's conditionally approved, they'd have 60 days to bring us resolution, but we cannot defer this to January, because we do not have any room on that agenda.
Let me sit back. If I read what I'm supposed to properly, a deferral has to come back in the next regular meeting. Since that's not possible, it would have to be a continuance to a given date, and the continuance is going to create a problem with the timeframe for the 60-day period.
Right, so our options are deny it or conditional approval.
Thinking through the options that we have before us, I mean, when we get to that point, is this the developer that came for an extension not long ago, where we had conditionally approved something, and then they asked for an extension because the, that timeframe, is that, am I, remember that correctly?
Yes, that was another section that was Edgewater Phase 11.
Okay.
This is a different area.
Under a different set of rules, and it's under a different section.
Right, okay. I just, I just wanted to, so many folks come before, so I want to make sure, got them squared
Anything else for staff? Does the applicant have anything they would like to ask?
Brandon Pridemore, 1186 Stonecrest Boulevard, TQK. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Staff did a good job outlining kind of where we're at as we sit today. We've addressed a lot of the comments. We're very confident we can address everything, you know, in the next 30 days, to be honest with you. So, we would ask, you know, given the options that have been presented, to see if we can go ahead and get a conditional approval, and I have full faith we'll have everything addressed literally by the second week of January. As we've addressed 80% of the comments, we did resolve with the fire marshal his comment already. We have resolved with Sandra with 911 about road names and the naming requirements. That's kind of been resolved. We submitted names in for approval from a planning standpoint, the sidewalk. There, there's some language in there, but we're going to agree to go ahead and add the additional sidewalks, so no issues there, and we're already working on a lighting plan, which was one of the other outstanding comments. So, they're nothing major, and it has no material change on the layout of the site. So, we would ask for approval tonight, or conditional approval.
Pridemore, do you think they'll have that pump station in time?
I'm working on it, sir, so yes, we will.
And it'll be in operation?
The pump station?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
One that's going to handle the sewer from this property.
That's correct. That's a whole separate agreement that, that True Homes does have with Lancaster County Water and Sewer District, because they're the one building it and everything, or contributing to it. So, that's all been worked out prior to, but Lancaster County Water and Sewer District right now, as you kind of have seen, isn't really commenting on these preliminary plats, but we have full confidence that we're not going to come back in for a continuance or an extension of vested rights.
Have they even started that pump?
I can't answer that. Do you know? Keith, do you know?
I don't think they've even started on it, and it's going to take a while to get that thing built and in operation.
Yes, sir.
And you think it's going to happen in, in 30 days?
Well, the pump station's not going to happen in 30 days, no, sir.
How are we going to handle the sewer from that property if we approve it?
The 60 days is for Lancaster Water and Sewer to review and approve the plan to move forward.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
Any questions?
That answers that question. Is there anything else? Thank you, Mr. Pridemore.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Keith Fenn with True Homes, 21232 Sanctuary Drive, Lancaster. Just wanted to point out on this, the pump station, Sunset Point is adjacent to this, and this is way ahead in terms of entitlements and finalized approvals. So, that pump station will get built before this is even finished. So, the, the timing already works, which is why we're coming in with this plan, because it's been taking us two years to get things fully entitled and fully developed. I'm here if you have any other questions on the project, though.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we would consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. No one is signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing, and that public hearing will be over, whereas we won't have to do it next time. If there is a next time. Commissioners, you have before you SD 2023 1409, the pinnacle at Sunset Point. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval, conditional approval based on the following.
Need some help?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and list those conditions.
Based on the street names being approved.
Pardon me?
Based on the street names being approved, the...
I didn't hear you.
Street names.
Street names.
Yes, sir. And that'll be on the February agenda. Lancaster Water and Sewer reviewing the plan.
Someone mentioned sidewalks.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I'm getting to it.
Okay, sorry.
Fire plan, or the hydrants being shown on both sides of the street. Sidewalk path being completed, and a streetlight plan being provided.
Sidewalk plan.
Yes, sir.
And lighting.
And street lighting, yes, sir. If that's okay with you, sir, Mr. Barnett. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Patterson.
Just, could, Mr. Barnett, maybe through Ms. Harden, could you give some clarity on the water and sewer? It says the, Lancaster County Water and Sewer has not yet provided a review of the proposal. Are we just saying that we want them to review it, or we want them to review it and the developer to resolve any TRC comments that they might have with that plan?
I think that is probably included in...
That, what I'm hearing?
That, that is the better way to say what was intended with the TRC comments. Thank you.
Would we rephrase that as review and approval?
Review and address comments from Lancaster Water and Sewer.
I thought that's what you meant, Mr. Barnett. I just wanted clarity on it.
Anyone else? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, Mr. Barnett, a second, Ms. Kiratun. Any further discussion?
I just have, Mr. Chairperson, I just have a comment with, with the conditional approval. And having known now that, you know, we've, we've had extensions requested by this developer that, you know, I'd be, would not support an extension if it were to be sought by this developer for this project coming forward. They have, just clarity that they have 60 days to resolve this, you know, from the
Any further discussion? I read the motion before you by Mr. Barnett, a second by Ms. Kiratun, to approve with the following conditions, that the street names be resolved, Lancaster County Water and Sewer District review the plans and their comments being approved, fire hydrants be added to both sides of the street where they are not shown, sidewalk plan be completed, and the street lighting be completed and shown on the plan also. Those are the conditions that I have heard and have in writing. Is there any further comments? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alan Patterson.
Or.
Yuki McKiratun.
Or.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg.
For.
Sheila Hinson.
Or.
James Barnett.
Or.
Chairman Dees.
Or.
Motion to approve with the conditions stated is passed by a vote of six to zero. This will go to County Council, and, no, I'm sorry, it does not. I'm sorry, it does not. It's a preliminary plat. But those conditions have to be met within the given time, or it will not happen. The next item...
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Will, will Mr. Chairman, will Commissioner Patterson's comments about not extending, will that be included?
They, they have the right to request, but I, I would not support it if they did request it.
That would have to be addressed at the time that they make that request.
At the time, yes. All right, the next item is new road name, 2023 2146 Elite Avenue.
This is me.
Go for it.
This one's pretty simple. We have an application by Mr. Kissanini to name a private road extending from Lengar's Way behind QT and KFC and Indian Land. Some of you are familiar with this as the cut-through. I've not been there myself. To allow addressing of a proposed commercial, a proposed commercial buildings at tax map number 0008 dash 00, 00 dash 061.03.
Say that three times.
Sorry. Yeah. I can't say it once, Ms. Kiratun. When I spoke to you at workshop, I had not had complete conversations with Sandra. My understanding was that this was just to address, just to deal with being able to map this road so that they could find it for deliveries that go to the loading docks that are on this access road. However, there is a developer who has submitted a plan, is in sketch plan, to build commercial buildings on the parcel outlined here. The only real access for this parcel is on that, that basically, it's not an alley, but it's a, an access road. He wants to build three commercial buildings, a little small commercial development, retail development. One of the conditions in the TRC comments for that sketch plan is he has to have the roads named, or has to have the road named. This plan is not necessarily going to be approved, but they cannot even continue with their sketch plans and, and their plats and approval until they get, they get the road named. So, that's just step number one for them. There is much more that they will need to do. There are other TRC comments. I included the TRC comments and the sketch plan in your packet, so you could have that for reference. So, approving this name does not approve the plan. This is only so that they can check that box on their list of TRC comments. There is much more that they need to do. That road will need to be upgraded and widened and lined and made an actual road, because it's not a road right now. Yes, I'm sorry. Someone was asking.
Thank you for all of, all of that. In workshop, I brought up the need for, we know it's a private drive, much-needed road repairs, when we didn't know about the future sketch plan and desire to develop that site. Is that something being built by Wright, or is it something that's going to come across our table where we can discuss those needs, or is it?
That will come.
That will be a private road. So the properties accessing on it will be required to make those upgrades and turn it into an actual road. But again, we are not talking about that now. That will not come to us because that's a civil, it's a civil plan.
Oh, we're discussing.
Yeah, it's by right.
I understand that.
But I have been informed by those, the TRC that they are requiring that that be upgraded. So if that is a concern.
Thank you.
Yes. But again, that won't come before us because it's not the type of plan that we have to review.
Hearing no one else, we have a roll call vote, I get. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, Ms. Curriton?
Second.
Second. Mr. Barnett, any discussion?
I just got a comment. I mean, I just, I'm, I mean, that's a parking lot and you're talking about putting commercial buildings on it and traffic. Golly, Pete, I, I just. Golly, Pete, it's just, I understand.
Well, that will come in the future, not tonight.
Will it? Will it to us?
All we're doing is naming a road.
What we're doing is naming a road. I'm trying, I'm trying.
Right, but by doing that, we're approving.
It has other repercussions.
We're not approving anything.
We haven't seen anything else. We're not approving anything except the road name.
I included the.
Provided by 911 and/or, or approved by 911.
But if it's not approved, then it doesn't move forward. Is that correct?
The name will remain, but the, but the plan will not move forward.
Correct.
Yeah. And it will, it will improve the mapping access for deliveries for existing businesses there because they have loading docks that access there. And they're impossible to find because that road is not named on, on mapping software.
And to possibly answer some questions that might be asked, even private roads have to be built to Public Works standards, which is more than the standard required by SCDOT. So even private roads in subdivisions have to be built to their standard. And Jeff Cato is pretty strong on it.
So one benefit of it becoming a private road that is named is it will be inspected.
It will be checked.
And certain requirements will need to be met.
Concerning the road name, is there any further questions? Hearing none, can we have a vote, please?
Alan Patterson?
Against.
Yuki MaCurran?
Against.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Um, against.
Sheila Henson?
Or.
James Barnett?
Or.
Chairman Dees?
Or.
Motion to approve is denied by a vote of three to three. And this will move forward and.
This, this stops here and the applicant can come back. But, yeah. This stops their plan in its tracks.
I think that there is some confusion when the comments were made and appreciate you making the comments about future construction that may or may not ever happen on that road simply because we were voting on a road name only. Nothing else. And nothing else should have even been discussed. Anything, the overview for next month's agenda, please?
The future impacts of that are concerning and I couldn't vote without having peace of mind about it. Marvin Road is an intersection that is a big can of worms. So until those things are addressed, this stands.
That's fine.
And I think.
You have the right to vote, you're right. We're going to discuss the items before us.
Well, but I mean, and Mr. Chairperson with, Mr. Chairperson, with all due respect, I understand that.
I've already asked for a comment down here.
Well, but we're, we're discussing, you're discussing, so we're all going to discuss. So with all due respect, I think the information that we have for us, that's part of planning. And so if we have information that helps, helps us plan, now, the system may be broken. We may need to improve it. But, you know, we, we do need to make decisions based on all the information to help us make the best decisions in my seat, not just piecemeal.
We have the overview of next month's agenda now, please.
Next month's agenda will be January 16th. That night, we are having two meetings. We have scheduled our planning meeting to start at 5:30 so that we can cover the two agenda items we have, which are both preliminary plats. One will be the Edgewater Section 11, which is coming back. And the Asbury Lane site is coming back for a preliminary plat, a smaller plat than, than previously submitted in last year. But we need to get through those two items early in order to have a joint meeting following that, starting at 6:30. We're going to have a joint meeting with all of us, the council and the steering committee for the comp plan so that we can review information about the comp plan. This was the requested meeting. The only meeting time that council could make was that night. So we're moving our meeting up a little bit so that we allow time for the comp plan meeting that has been requested. I also have for you a list of the January and February meetings regarding the comp plan, the public meetings and steering committee meetings and planning commission meetings. So I'm going to hand you a copy of that. So if there's any updates, I'll let you know. But we are busily trying to schedule the public input meetings so that we can get this reviewed and to council by March.
Thank you. While she's handing those out, is there anything further?
We thank you for your time. We will have food on the 16th. We will feed you, so don't panic about that. And the, the contractors that are working on the comprehensive plan are not able to be at the 16th meeting. So it will be us talking about our plan. And if we come up with things that need to be changed from input from the steering committee, the council or you, we'll take notes and we'll pass that along to the, to the reviewer or to the contractors. In addition, the three public meetings that are being held in the different areas of the county, if you have the opportunity to attend the one that's in yours, please feel free to do so. Staff will be at each one of them. At least somebody from, from staff will be at each one of them as well as the, the contractors. And that's the last push before we take the draft to council in March. So as a reminder, please do get your comments in writing in as soon as you can. And if it's not, if you think of something later on, after you've submitted comments, it's okay. We have time on the 16th of January and three meetings where other input can be added. But do get your preliminary comments in, please, as soon as possible. I also want to thank those that were able to attend the comprehensive plan discussion that we had as far as comprehensive planning in general. Happy to have that. During the time that we had that meeting, we talked about having other topics relating to Lancaster County in particular as discussion topics, one of which is resiliency and sustainability and how it relates to what regulations we put in and the like. How it relates to growth would be a, a nice tie-in that we can do as well. So we're planning that in the first quarter of next year. Not quite sure when yet, but it's on my list of things to get in the quarter. So maybe we can get all your training out in addition to the comp plan before Easter. That would be great.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for setting up that, the special meeting for the comp plan discussion. Ms. Harden did just an outstanding job, very informative, very well put together, very organized. So it was a, it was a great, it was worthwhile investment of time. So thank you for putting that together. I appreciate that.
Chairman.
I had it on my calendar, but I had a problem at home. I could not leave.
Chairman, let me ask the commissioners. Would you like me to send you the PowerPoint slides from, from that so that everyone has, has that information? Okay, I'll send that out to all of you tomorrow morning.
Yeah, we had the PowerPoint slides and one, just back and front page review from the American Planning Association on comprehensive planning. You're welcome.
Anything else?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Move to adjourn. It's adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, stand up.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks.